I think we'll start. We have a whole list of decisions, which we'll get to in a minute, and we also have a list of adjournments, which we'll take care of first. So those people who are here for those cases, those cases that we adjourn will not be heard tonight. The first one being case number 2746-550 and 554 Hill Street. I move that that be adjourned pending the planning board. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Case number 2847, 140 on Meadow Lane. We have requests for adjournment on that. I move that that be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Case number 2848, Daring LLC, 120 Meadow Lane. I move that that be adjourned at request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case number 2859, number 70 on Meadowmere Place. We have a request for adjournment on that. I move that that be adjourned at request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Case number 2858, the other one for number 140, they have withdrawn that case. So we don't need any motion on that. That is withdrawn. So if you're here for any of the cases that we adjourned, they will not be heard tonight.
Is that the next date, Mr. Chairman? Is it next month? What day would it be next month?
March and February are the same. March 26th, four weeks from tonight. And this year, both those months have a Friday, the 13th, if that's interesting. That brings us up to the cases for decision. Those people who are here for decisions, let me just advise you, there are only three of us. When there's only three of us, you have to get all three eyes on a decision. So if you'd rather have it postponed till next month, when there'll be more of us, and you can get three out of five, or four out of five, or five out of five, instead of having to worry about three out of three, that's up to you. First one being 2845, Judith Guest, 1 First Neck Lane. Can I have a motion to approve that decision as written?
Motion to approve as written.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to skip down the ones that have to do with wetlands, because that has to do with Mr. Voorhees. Number 2851, David Steinberg, 32 North Woolly Street. May I have a motion to approve that as written?
Motion to approve David Steinberg as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 2852, Michael Iowanu, 76 Pine Street. May I have a motion to approve that as written?
Motion to approve Michael Iowanu decision as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 2854, Robert M. Robert, 159 Main Street. May I have a motion to approve that as written?
Motion to approve Robert M. Robert decision as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chick, is 2855, is that yours? 200 Captain's Neck Lane?
No, it's not.
No, that's a, we have a written decision.
That's not a wetlands one.
No.
Number 2855, 200 Captain's Neck Lane. May I have a motion to approve that as written?
Motion to approve 200 Captain's Neck Lane as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 2857, Gregory Pamel, 27 Cameron Street. May I have a motion to approve that as written?
Motion to approve Gregory Pamel decision as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I skipped some, because they have to do with wetlands and that. You want a copy?
Yeah, Stanburg.
Which one?
Stanburg.
The first of those is 2849, K&amp;B Schwartz, 155 Duck Pond Lane.
That would be a motion to adopt the negative declaration and the wetland special permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
Motion to adopt...
You can so move, you don't have to repeat it.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have the decision itself.
Now, that covered them both.
That covers them both, okay.
Okay.
Do you have extra copies in case the applicants are here?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. There's a whole bunch of copies hanging around.
Which one are you looking for?
2849.
What's the name of it? That's it?
That takes us up to 2853, JV 20 Gin Lane LLC, 20 Gin Lane.
Same thing. It would be a motion to adopt the negative declaration and wetland special permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And 2856, Beck &amp; Alex, 22 LLC, 22 Gin Lane.
Same wording. A motion to adopt the negative declaration and the wetland special permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that handles all the decisions, correct?
Well, we might as well do the Dune Church one.
Oh, the Dune Church one, right.
Yes. Which one are you looking for?
I need Beck &amp; Alex and also 20 JV. Wetlands.
Which one are you referring?
Thanks, Jerry.
Which one?
Jerry. The Dune Church one, too?
On 2836 St. Andrews Dune Church, it would be a motion to adopt the negative declaration and the coastal erosion management permit prepared by our environmental consultant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, why don't we do 2846, AM 40 Meadow Lane, since all we're doing is closing that for decision? Well, let's just double check. At the last meeting, there was an understanding by all parties that written submissions would be made by certain dates in February, and then the matter would be closed for decision tonight. Those written decisions have been made. The board is prepared to honor the understanding and close the matter for decision, unless there's some comment on that.
Not at all. We are in agreement with that. Both parties did adhere to the schedule. It was to be a final schedule with 10 days, and then 10 days. Both parties did satisfy that agreement. So we would just ask representing the applicants tonight that the matter be closed.
That's fine with me. I have the whole team here in case there were any questions on the submissions.
I saw you brought the whole team.
But if you're satisfied with the submissions, so are we.
We could make a motion to close this matter for decision.
I move we close number 40 Meadow Lane for decision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Place is clearing out rapidly.
You cleared out the... Was it something you said?
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks. Thank you. Wow.
Good evening, board members, for the applicant, John Bennett. This matter was closed for decision, but then it turned out that there was some additional relief was necessary. So we have reposted the property and given notice to everyone else that was required to... We did repost the property, and we have a new mailing as well. So this is the one where it was on for decision on the pyramid more relief, and when I was working, you know, reviewing the file for decision, I discovered that there were a couple of side yard variances that were necessary that weren't asked for, the reason being that although the setbacks conform with the zoning code setback requirements for the lot based on lot size, this lot is a flagpole lot approved many years ago, and because it's a flagpole lot, there are greater setbacks than would be the normal setbacks. So that's what there, that's why it was reopened. So I could just take you briefly through the matter, because you've heard it on a couple of occasions. We had a public hearing back in October, and then the board requested, because we needed some pyramid relief, I think Member Guzewitz wanted us to see if we could shave off some of the pyramid requests. So we did that, and so we reduced one of the side yard setbacks from 10 to 11, but that saved us, reduced the pyramid encroachment, it all adds up by 180, 840 cubic feet. So the pyramid request is in the relief of 3,537, but that's only about 840 cubic feet over what we would be allowed as of right because of the pre-existing matters. So I just wanted to go over this. This has all been presented on a couple of occasions, but I just wanted to go over it, because it's been a while since I, we talked about it. But we did, at the request of the board, relieve, reduce the request for pyramid relief, and then we significantly reduced the request for relief for the pool. So we're down to very, very small pool requests of about a couple of feet, of a couple of feet on each side, and then about, I think, a foot and a half on the rear. And there's a letter of support from the neighborhood, the most affected neighbor to the east on that pool, and she herself did obtain a pool variance. So I think, I don't want to belabor the point, because all of that is in the record, and I think it's been amply discussed and demonstrated, and we did make some modifications at the request of the board. The only thing that's new is, again, I apologize, I missed this request for relief. The only sort of solace I have, and so do the building department, because it's, when you have a flagpole now, you have, those requirements for the benefit that it would usually would have for the 10-foot side yard requirements as a result of the size of the lot, or you don't get that benefit on a flagpole, regardless of where you are, you have to maintain this 20-foot side yard setback. So we need a little, little extra help there, but I don't, so we'll need 10.2 feet and 11 feet on the west and the east respectively, and a total side yard of 21.2. But that's only because this is a flag lot, and I think, I actually contemplated for a while arguing to you that it wasn't a true flagpole lot, because it certainly doesn't look like one, it's certainly not what one thinks about when they think of a flagpole lot, but...
It's like a lightning bolt.
Yeah, I know. But I do have to begrudgingly state to you, it probably does meet the technical requirements of a flagpole. So rather than have that argument, I will just ask you for that additional relief on the side yards. We have a letter from the neighbor to the north, also Mr. Gilleski, has been very helpful and cooperative. He's the neighbor to the, and we have a letter from the neighbor of the property to the east, and Mr. Gilleski to the north has been very cooperative, because we've made, as you know, as being a flagpole, we also had to go to the zoning board of appeals, and we've worked out a very agreeable planting plan as it relates to Mr. Gilleski. We made substantial changes as a result of his requests, and we're, he's happy with that. So I would respectfully submit to you that the variances are not substantial, and of course, they won't, I think, if anything, this will be a positive effect to the neighborhood, you're going to have a nice redevelopment on this piece of property, no adverse impacts. I think my prior testimony sufficiently, if I may, covers all the reasons why respectfully you should grant the relief, and I don't think there's any need, unless the board has any additional questions to belabor the point.
The date of the revision I have here is November the 17th. Is that the date of his last revision?
Yeah, it's November the 17th, but the, I want to make sure the survey...
It says the 11 feet to the east and...
It's 11 feet to the east and 10.2 to the west.
10.2 to the west.
Yeah. So the request for the...
That's the same survey that was before us originally, it's just that now there's a, the side yard variances are needed, but the survey has not changed.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, you did have the earlier one that was back in August.
Yeah, but we shaved, at the request of primarily Mr. Guzewitz, I think we shaved some off that, and it was surprising how much that, losing that one foot reduced the need for pyramid relief, so it's fine, it all works.
Is there anything else, Tom?
No, no.
Any questions from the board? Rick?
Of course.
Anyone out in the audience like to heard of this application? No?
Make the proposal for decision.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close this for decision?
Motion to close for decision.
All in favor?
Aye.
2757, the Wickapog Pond Rehab Project.
Good evening. Bruce Horwith here, on behalf of the Wickapog Pond Homeowners Association. And maybe what I should do is just quickly recap where we're at at this stage. We, there's been an ongoing project to control both water lilies within the pond and fragmatis along the shoreline, and that work has been done, was done through the summer. And then I came for the board in, at the end of the summer, because of the fact that one of the homeowners had mistakenly cut above the area where the fragmatis was, the monoculture, and had gone up to a portion that came away from the shore by about 15, 20 feet, on up to 30 feet, and it was a, in that area, she had had her gardener go in and just cut it down, hand-cut it down, and when pointed out that that was not allowed, then we came to the board for a revegetation, restoration of that area. And subsequent, and so I submitted paperwork at that time, and Mr. Voorhees had some concerns about what was going to be planted, and we've had some email exchanges, and then I met with Mr. Voorhees and his colleague at their offices, I think it was sometime in the fall, and put together a plan which I think addresses the concerns that he had at that point.
Chick, any comments on this?
This was submitted back in, on February 2nd, but I just received it at work session this week, so I haven't had a chance to review it in detail. Everything Bruce mentioned is accurate, just in terms of the background and where we are now. So what I'd like to do, I mean, I think it's fairly straightforward, I just want to be able to review this in a little bit more detail, and with the board's permission, communicate with Mr. Horwith before the next work session, if that's okay.
Anybody else on the board that we need to say on this one? Anybody on the audience like to heard of this application? So we'll just adjourn this for all purposes?
I think that would be good, yeah. That would give us the flexibility. If everything's worked out, you know, we don't want to drag it out, but it's been quite a while that we've been waiting for this plan.
Right, right. Sure, thanks.
I move we adjourn Wickapog Pond Rehab Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe that takes us down to the new cases. First one being case number 2860, SH Meadow Lane LLC, 715 Meadow Lane.
Melissa Dedovich, iconic environmental associates, I'm here on behalf of SH Meadow Lane LLC. The property located 715 Meadow Lane may look very familiar, because this is a property that this board issued variances in wetland permit for last summer for the construction of a single-family residence in place of an existing residence. Presently, there is an existing bulkhead and boat slip and timber walkway that actually was permitted by this board in 1992 for the previous property owner. That permit also, that work also was permitted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as well as town trustees. I believe a copy of this original ZBA decision was presented by the application package. If you look at the plans that were prepared by Terry Contracting, what we proposed to do is pretty much what was covered in that original permit. It would be dredging the existing boat slip to elevation negative four, with the spoils be placed behind the bulkhead. That would be approximately 150 to 200 cubic yards of spoil. The existing bulkhead would be removed, and we would be replacing it in place with 278 linear feet of vinyl sheet piled bulkhead. And then we'd also be removing and replacing in place and kind the existing timber walkway with tropical hardwood framing and decking, and that's about 524 cubic, square feet. The planting afterwards, we would incorporate the original planting plan, that was part of the ZBA decision and wetland permit issued last summer, a copy of which is also in your file. And I'm here to answer any questions or provide, I have photographs also, but I think the board is familiar with this property.
The other decision is here, it was 1992?
Correct. For Musarria, I can never say that name right. Musara, I think, Eleanor Musarria, yes.
Yeah. Eleanor Musara, M-U-S-A-R-R-A. That's the previous owner.
Correct.
Did they build the house then? Was the house there then, or did they build, the house is the same house, it was new, right?
The house was there, I think. They had it, oh gosh, this is going back in my memory. I think the house came before the bulkhead. I think the house had been there for, yeah, the house was built in the 50s, I believe. That was the whole, why we got the variance for the original existing house, and to demolish and build a FEMA-compliant house in its place.
That's what's going up now, the new house.
Correct.
Has all the green on it.
Every week it changes color. First you saw the timber.
Any comments from the board? Chick?
As Melissa said, we had reviewed this previously. Similar to the last one, I really haven't had a chance to look at this in any great detail. Work session was Tuesday, the meeting is tonight. Are there any other details about the dredging? Because I see it in the project description, but I don't really see anything on the plan as far as existing depths, proposed depths, cross-sections.
This is actually, also, I forgot to mention, big, bad on my part, we, this is a plan that was also submitted to the town trustees in New York State, DC, and I have copies I can present to the board. We have received permits based on this, because they're considering it a maintenance dredging and a maintenance or reconstruction of existing approved structures. So I can also submit those if the board would like them.
Here, here, come in the files.
You just want one copy, do you, she don't each want a copy, or do you?
If you have an extra copy, I'd appreciate it.
If you want to Chick, and maybe one to Rick, and I'll have one for the file.
Sure, okay.
And I think that's, that's relevant, it's helpful, just to see, you know, the trustees have jurisdiction there. Our concern is the placement of the material on the property. But in concept, you know, we've reviewed this before and felt that it was an improvement, that there were maintained lawn areas on the west side of the property, that there was a sanitary system on the east side of the property, and all of those are things that are being improved. And this is the one where they have the lot to the west, and the existing catwalk is being removed. So I think we just need to, you know, take a quick look and, you know, verify that everything is consistent and accurate, and we should be in good shape for next improvement.
Is there anyone in the audience like to heard of this application? Therefore, we'll adjourn this for all purposes?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn for all purposes.
Second.
All in favor? Case number 2861, on the application of Ophir Kadah, 111 Hetty Creek Lane.
Melissa Dedovich, iconic environmental associates, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This actually is the construction, we're recommending a construction of a low-profile catwalk across the existing wetlands area on this property. You should have a set of plans in your, in your application packages. We're proposing a four-foot by 136-foot six catwalk with 60% flow-through decking, to end at a four-by-four steps-to-the-water that also be flows through decking. I did have a meeting this afternoon with Ed Warner, Jr., president of town trustees, and this is actually scheduled to be approved as shown by the trustees on Monday. If you look at D3, you can see that we're trying to do, it's actually very low with the flow-through decking, we're trying to keep it as visually unobtrusive as possible. The only place that we have any kind of railing, rope railing, is over when it becomes a little more elevated over the water area, and that's mostly for safety reasons. And I'm here to address any questions or concerns anybody might have about the project.
It's wetland, so we'll leave it up to Chick.
Okay. Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward. Are the, the only plans that show the catwalk are the iconic environmental plans, right? They're not shown on the survey?
No. Generally, we don't, aren't required to show them on the surveys, only having plans, we tend to show a survey, to show the property, that property, actually, and also, the survey refers to a Bob Fox sounding survey, too, if you see on our plans.
Just say that again?
The depths that are shown, what our plans are based on is an actual hydro, hydro survey done by, right, done by Bob Fox, okay.
Would we usually look to see it shown on the survey, Rick?
We haven't shown one before that I've gotten through, Matlin, or the other ones I've gotten in the last couple of years.
I know for any other structures, you know, landscaping or anything, we look for it on the survey as well.
It's my recollection, we, we have it shown on the survey, but you would know better than me, because you...
I mean, I think, I think that's really important, just so that it's put in the right location, and, you know, that a surveyor has plotted it, so that it, you know...
Well, what I could, I could actually give you the actual Bob Fox survey, which is taken, all this information, aside from the dock itself, is taken from an actual survey.
I have a Squires Holden survey here.
Right, that's for the property survey, but I'm saying that the Bob Fox... Right, that's for the property survey, but I'm saying that the Bob Fox, and I didn't bring the file with me, this actual first page is all an actual stamped survey and I can give you a copy without our plan, without our letterhead on it.
Okay, from the surveyor that would locate this.
Correct. It doesn't include the house and everything, but that's not what's in front of the board.
Right, right, but it would be from a licensed survey.
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like me to submit that next month?
I think that would be good.
Okay.
And then I just, also, Rick, I had a quick question, we didn't really get to talk about this, but is this in any way subject to accessory structure setbacks? You know, like a side yard type of setback?
This is a-
A catwalk, four foot wide. And then while Rick's looking that up, the only other question I had was just to indicate how any disturbance, if there is disturbance, to access the catwalk and construct it, how that would be restored after construction.
Okay. So you want a construction methodology?
Yeah, and, you know, more concerned, I don't, usually we ask for that, if it's going to impact neighbors or, you know, if you need staging areas or whatever. It might help on this site because it is a flagpole lot, but, you know, I'm assuming that everything's going to be off Hedy Creek Lane and there's not that much material. So if you could indicate that it's staged on the site and then also, once the catwalk is constructed, if there's disturbance through the buffer area to the wetland, how that would be restored. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I think, right, I do. The way we did on Matlin and how we had the construction methodology explaining is that it would be done in a linear fashion, start from the water back. So there shouldn't be any disturbance done. Also, just to give you a heads up, we are going to be coming in, and I think I may have mentioned this to you, with some additional work on the property, including, there had been a restoration of this wetlands done many years ago and it, when Chick went out to, when Mr. Voorhees went out to Flagah, he knows it's kind of not working, how else to put it? So we're actually going to be coming back in with a wetlands restoration in the next couple of months if you're, if we did a methodology to explain that we're just going to use that area and come in subsequently with a complete restoration project, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, just on that note, this, this property had quite a bit of fragmites, as I recall, because we did issue a permit originally. I think Intersignage did the original permit. And so that actually has been removed and, you know, a restoration plan was implemented and for the most part, it's pretty successful. It got rid of the fragmites and there's a lot of wetland vegetation that actually goes beyond where the original wetlands line was. So this new wetland line from October 14th, actually, I think it goes inland more than the previous one, but it's because that area was restored. So, you know, I don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with the catwalk. I don't have a problem with tuning up the planting plan and that could be a separate permit if it's necessary, there may be some things you could do without the permit. And all I'm really asking for is that when you trample through the adjacent area, you know, the buffer area, to build the catwalk, that there's some notation that that area will be restored.
Okay.
And maybe let's just keep that as part of this permit and then if you come in for other restoration activities, we'll just do that separately. As well as, you know, just staging the materials on the property.
Right, there'll probably be staging the existing-
Just a brief narrative, I think is fine. A graphic plan would be fine, too.
It'll be in the area of the existing lawn. It shouldn't be that much material.
Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything in the zoning code that would accept, that would, that would be an exception to the setback requirement for structures. Is it, does it meet the setback or it does not, or?
I was going to ask for the setback to be plotted because I wasn't sure if it met it or not, but I also wasn't sure if accessory structure setback would apply.
Well, my experience with this board and with the trustees is that you generally go where the closest point is to get to the maximum water, making the shortest catwalk and/or dock, with a minimum setback from a property line of either 10 to 15 feet, which is what we've always done with the town trustees and which, in my experience, in 20 years I've been in front of this board, is what we've done also. This is the first time I've heard about it, meeting accessory structure setbacks. So it, to me, and what the D.C. looks like, looks at also, is what is the closest point from A to B to get to deepest water with the shortest structure possible?
You're talking from a wetlands point of view, the issue here is the zoning issue.
What I'm saying is that it's never been, and I know you have a lot more experience than I, Rick, but I'm just saying, I, in my experience, we've, I've never come across that in the village and-
I can't think of anything in the zoning code that would accept it, that would say it's not subject to a setback.
Is it considered an accessory structure if it doesn't have a roof or doesn't, it has open grating? Because it's not a pervious structure.
Why don't you start by talking with Jonathan Foster and let's see?
Okay, yeah.
And then if it is subject to it, just put the setback on the plan.
And if it is subject to it and it doesn't meet it, you'll have to ask for a variance. I'm not going to make, I don't want to make it a-
It's really a Foster call.
You know, you ought to start with Jonathan Foster, but it's certainly an issue that needs to be considered.
Just asking question, when, if, if it doesn't meet it, would the board consider, from a wetlands perspective, because you're having now an issue with overlapping jurisdictions too, about getting, making the shortest possible structure, or is that something we'll have to discuss when we look at everything?
If you're going to need a variance, it's something that you'll have to apply for and it'll be discussed at the time.
Okay. I'll talk to John about it because, again, I don't, in my experience, have never asked to have a catwalk or a dock, made an accessory structure.
I don't remember if the questions come up. I used to have a very sharp and crystal clear-
You still do.
-memory on things going back many years, but as I get older, I don't trust my memory anymore. I don't know if it's come up before the zoning board, so why don't you start with Jonathan Foster?
Okay.
On the, on the survey, it shows a wood chip path, is that the general area where the catwalk will be?
Correct. If you look on our plan, it actually shows that the existing walk, you look at the second page, goes zigzag and we just made it straight across. Closest point from A to B.
Is there any, if anyone in the audience would like to heard of this application? So this will be adjourned for all purposes.
I move we adjourn for all purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
On the application of case number 2862, William and Sharon Jacob, 52 Bishop's Lane.
Good evening. Robert Collier, Farrell Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermelon, New York, for the applicants William and Sharon Jacob. Here with me this evening is Sean Leonard, the architect working on the project. The Jacobs' property is located at 52 Bishop's Lane and is located in the R40 zoning district. The property measures 28,987 square feet in size and is improved with a pre-existing non-conforming two-story, single-family dwelling, the front porch, a pre-existing non-conforming two-story garage with second-floor apartment and a basketball court. The pre-existing non-conforming two-story garage with the second-floor apartment is situated five feet from the side yard lot line that is shared with the neighbor to the north and only 31.9 feet from the front yard lot line. That structure, as it presently exists, has a total floor area of 2,610 square feet, consisting of 1,038 square feet of garage area and 534 square feet of storage area on the first floor and 138 square feet of living area on the second floor. And that second floor contains two bedrooms. We're here this evening seeking relief from this board to allow for the removal of that pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure and permitting the Jacobs to construct a similar accessory structure 20 feet from the northernly side yard property line and 80 feet from the front yard lot line. The proposed structure will contain more living area than the existing garage apartment, but there will only be one bedroom in the, in the building. The Jacobs are asking for this relief because the main house has a floor area of only 1,775 square feet and three bedrooms. The applicants have four children ranging in age from 16 down to eight and have a large extended family that often visits during the summer months. They simply just do not have the room in the, the main house to accommodate everyone. And if this board were to grant the relief requested, the Jacobs would happily accept the condition that the proposed apartment could only be used by their guests and family and that it would not be rented. A grant of this relief would not result in any negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. The property has been improved with a large accessory structure that has been used, at least in part, as living area since the inception of zoning and a structure of this nature is part of the character of the, of the neighborhood. Permitting the Jacobs to remove the pre-existing non-conforming garage apartment and build the new structure that conforms to all required setbacks will only have a positive effect on the character of the neighborhood for when the existing structure is not exactly attractive, and there's pictures of the, the structure in the handout that I provided the board. And two, it's currently, the way it's currently constituted, constituted, it looms over the property immediately to the north. So I think the, the benefit is readily apparent and unless there's someone here this evening, we did not receive any calls or questions from any of the neighboring property owners. And the last time I checked this morning, the building department did not receive any letters in opposition to this.
Have we had this before, this once before?
In 2006. Get to that in a second at the end. The benefit unfortunately cannot be achieved by an alternative method because the Village Code dictates the uses and size requirements for accessory structures and following the letter of the law, only a 800-square-foot accessory structure would be allowed on the property, which would not benefit the applicants. And while the variance requested is quantitatively substantial, because the property is already improved with a larger accessory structure than the one that's proposed to replace it and all setbacks will be maximized, there will be no impact at all on the, the neighboring property owners and therefore the substantiality of the variance is limited. There's not going to be any adverse impact on the environment as what is proposed is an accessory structure that is common in residential areas, albeit this is somewhat larger than customary. There have been no rare or endangered species, either plant or animal life identified on or around the subject property, and the property is not burdened by any wetlands or other unique landforms. And admittedly, this, the difficulty is self-created because the applicants are aware of the zoning code, however, Village Law 7-712B provides that this factor is not dispositive in the zoning board's consideration of an area variance. And lastly, and I think most important, this board previously granted similar relief to this property. On October 21st, 2006, the board granted area variances to allow the removal of the existing non-conforming garage apartment and allow for the construction of a new building 60 feet from the front yard lot line and 20 feet from the side yard lot line. The structure approved by the early decision had less living area, however, that decision also allowed for the expansion of the main house to create more living area in there, which the applicants are no longer interested in pursuing, they're going to leave the, the main house the way that it is. One last point, if the relief grant is granted, the total lot coverage will be reduced from 5,647 square feet down to 5,549 square feet and will be conforming to the zoning district.
So the difference between this application and the one of nine years ago is that this building will be slightly larger than what was granted then?
Right, the, the living area will be slightly larger because they're not going to put a garage in the bottom anymore, it's going to be two floors of living space, but there's only going to be one bedroom in, in the, the new structure.
And there will be no expansion of the existing house?
Correct.
And the setbacks, are they the same as what was granted before?
They're actually, the, the front yard lot line setback is greater by 20 feet.
Okay.
But the, the side yard will-
Shows 80 feet.
Correct.
And the sides show, show 20?
Yes.
The one side and 51 point something to the other side? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Do we have any questions? No. Rick?
A bunch of questions. Some of them may be answered by the prior case, but I, you know, he hasn't given us any information about it. You're making reference to a 2006 zoning board decision?
Yes.
You should, you know, we don't go back to our old, old files to dig things out, it's your job as the applicant to provide us with the relevant information. You should be getting copies of the 2006 decision, the 2002 map or survey or whatever you had that showed what, that shows what we approved back at that time. Any, any floor plans or anything like that? In other words, you got to give us, you know, backup as to what we approved in 2006 so that we can compare that to what you're asking for now and see to what extent there are concerns. Without that, we don't have anything to go on. Let's see. Perhaps that history would avoid some of my questions, but let me throw them out anyhow. Your application recites floor area data, you know, living area and total area, et cetera, for both the existing building that you're proposing to remove and the proposed building. We don't have anything that shows that data other than whoever prepared this application, whether it was you or Dave Gil-Martin or who, you know, we can't just accept your word for what the floor area data is. So you need to provide us with backup information, whether it's floor pan sketches or architects or architect data or whatever, but you have to verify that and you need to give us multiple copies, again.
Yeah, we have the one copy he just, just gave us of the decision.
I'll get you those, I'll get you that.
That decision by itself isn't going to tell us what we need to know because we need to know what, what was behind that decision. So if you could provide us with, in a, in a form that verifies it, what, what this data is that you're giving to us, because we don't know if it's accurate or not, for existing and proposed. Is there a certificate of occupancy for this property? And what does that say about this building, the existing building? We can't just take your word for the fact that it's been there forever. Okay, again, let me save you the trouble.
I'll get you the extra copies, I'm just handing what I have to the-
Okay, but it's not, it's not going to help you with, if you don't get us copies, multiple copies for all of us. So provide us to that. Maybe that, maybe the prior decision would have, you know, had some history behind it, so, so maybe we don't need to verify that, but I don't know, we haven't seen it. If you had given us the prior decision, et cetera, with this application, that might have saved some of these questions. But as long as I have them, I might as well ask them. And I see a note on the survey that said, that says this parcel is parcel B on a minus subdivision for Eleanor Voorhees.
Great name.
Well, spelled differently than yours.
Same thing.
I don't know when that subdivision approval was, what this building was considered to be at the time of that subdivision approval, et cetera. So again, it has to do with the history of this, some history on this building.
I'll get that information for you and supply to you by the work session.
Maybe, maybe the 2006, I'm going to guess that since we granted something in 2006, that we were satisfied with the history. But again, I haven't seen anything. So maybe we won't need that history. Maybe the CO and our prior decision will cover it, but I can't tell you that without seeing them. So we're going to need to adjourn this for all purposes and have them provide all of this data and information so we know what we're looking at. this data and information, so we know what we're looking at.
I'll provide it to you by the work session.
If you get it to us by the work session, at least-
Seventeenth.
At least we'll get a chance to see it before the meeting, in case we have questions.
Very good.
Seventeenth is the work session.
I'll have it for you.
If anyone in the audience wishes to be heard to this application?
Yes.
If you want to be heard to this application?
Fifty-two Bishop's Lane.
Please come up here. Would you please go to the microphone and tell us who you are?
Yes. Hi, my name is Tina Stavalek Kubaloski, and I have a property at 39 Corrigan Street, which I brought this so you could see exactly where my property is situated, next to, in regard to 52 Bishop's Lane. This is the property that is applying for a variance, and my property is here at 39 Corrigan Street. Just so you can see. And I have a letter I'd like to read and submit. Dear Board, I own a house at 39 Corrigan Street, which I rented last summer. My tenant, who has rented from me for a number of years, told me that for three to four weeks during the month of August, a group of guys at 52 Bishop's Lane played basketball all day and early evening, and played loud music till midnight. Although he called the police, nothing happened. His lease was up in the end of September, and it was at that time that I found out about this noise. I was very upset and continued to be very concerned. I went to the town hall to find out who owned the property. Much to my great surprise, there, as big as life, was a full basketball court right in the middle of this formerly quiet neighborhood. I think a basketball court belongs indoors, in a fully soundproof building, or in a playground. Here, in this town, we also have SYS, the Town Recreation Center, which has at least two high school regulation courts, which can be reserved at a minimal cost. To put a basketball court in this quiet neighborhood puts a significant burden on the neighbors and on their right to an expected enjoyment of their homes. Basketball courts bring groups. Groups bring noise. Certain noise can be monitored by the village code, but who monitors the noise from a basketball court? I've found that many people have played basketballs in their lives, including myself, so we all know how much fun it can be. I would like to know if the same group of people is coming back this summer. Will this summer of 2015 be a repeat of last summer? This application states that, should this board grant the relief requested the applicants, the applicants would offer as a condition of approval that only guests of the applicants may utilize the space. Was last summer's group tenants or guests?
We have no idea.
I know. This 2,238-square-foot building is to be constructed very close to the basketball court. Does this double the size of the group and double the noise? I would like to know, as a very concerned neighbor, what is the plan?
Well, they already have a building there that's been there for a long, long time.
Yes, I understand that, but it-
They're going to build a new building of smaller size. As far as the basketball court and the noise, that's not in the air of our responsibility. If they were making noise at night, no.
Yes, I understand, but I'd like to continue. And also, that building is a vacant building, it's my understanding. There's no one in it, it's, that's why they want to build a new building. So, but I'd like to just finish my letter. During my search to understand what was happening last August, I spoke with a neighbor on Bishop's Lane, who, in response to my inquiry about noise in the neighborhood, said, "Oh, you mean the basketball court and that group?" And went on to describe practically word for word what my tenant has told me. And there were other neighbors disturbed by the noise. Generally, people don't like to complain, but I noticed that a neighbor filed a complaint with the building department, as I have done. I grew up on Corrigan Street, and the neighborhood has always been quiet and neighborly, with good neighbors. I lived in New York City for many years also, so I know firsthand why people come to Southampton Village in particular. This is in part to rest and relax and sleep, enjoy nature and the company of family and friends, and to get away from the hustle and noise of city life. My house has a nice porch and backyard, and people love to sit out and enjoy the country life. The proximity to the ocean and village are particularly desirable. I have always had very good tenants, many of whom have been repeat tenants. The lease my tenant signs states, "Tenet must promptly comply with all laws, orders, anti-noise, and group ordinances, rules and directions of all governmental authorities." I am a good landlord and a good neighbor. Not only does this lease reassure me, but it is also meant to reassure my neighbors. As well as my concerns, there is a tone and frustration among other neighbors and village officials about the potential loss of the value of what has made Southampton Village what it is. I am thinking, maybe, after all is said and done, it does come down to we, the people, being good neighbors in each of our neighborhoods. I appreciate the opportunity to address the situation with you. I understand that you're a zoning board of appeals, but I really feel this large building, unless I know what's going on with it, and the basketball court combined, could be a great disruption to, to the neighborhood, based on the history of last summer. And I need a little help.
And they've already described what they're going to use the building for.
I, I'm sorry, you know, this was listed way down on your itinerary, and I just arrived, so I didn't hear the description. What is, I apologize.
It's going to be used for guests-
For guests.
-and family members.
Yes, for guests and family members.
Not a rental.
But I do not know what the other building, which is already on the property, was used-
Which building, you mean the house?
This house here.
Yeah, they live in the house.
They live here.
Yeah, in the house.
But this house here is what was making the noise.
It's going to be, going to be for guests and family members.
No, this is the house that already exists.
Right.
This is what they want to move, this.
They're not going to move it, they're going to tear it down and build something else.
Tear it down and build it here.
Yeah.
But they're not tearing this down.
No.
But this had the noise last year. This is what made the noise.
What, the house?
This house.
The house itself, or the building that they're going to tear down?
The house. Because no one lives in this.
No, not now.
But people live here. And whoever lived there last summer, in August, made a lot of noise and affected the neighborhood.
As I said before, we don't, we don't police these things, we don't have any control. If your tenant complained to the police, there should have been some action there.
But there wasn't.
What can I tell you?
But now-
I don't go around at night and tell people, "Stop making noise," it's not my job.
I understand that, and I do understand that. And I understand you're in a very difficult position. But I'm in a very difficult position, because these people are requesting to take what is now an empty garage with an apartment above, who I believe at the moment, and I could be wrong, no one lives in.
Well, at some point, it was used.
Yes.
Obviously, because they have, living quarters upstairs, it was used.
At some point, it was used. But last summer, the house on this property, not that building, was used. It's on the same piece of property.
Right.
And the house, whoever was in it, it may have been their guests, I don't know. That's why I felt I had to come here, because nobody can give me an answer. And I want to know if, when this building is constructed, is there going to be more noise on this one piece of property? I'm not expecting you to be able to answer me, but I was hoping the people who own the property could. Now apparently, they're not here, am I wrong?
Their attorney is here.
Well, maybe their attorney can help me out.
I think you already stated.
I didn't hear you, because this was, this was listed as the next to last thing on your agenda. Now, I wish I had been here, I'm sorry, I apologize again. But I don't know what happened to the previous-
They've all been heard.
They've all been heard, all the new cases, and, well, then I apologize again, and maybe you would like to explain to me then, what the house will be used for.
It's a guest, it's going to be used for guests of the family who live in the main house.
Yes, I understand that.
And that's what it's going to be used for. I mean, there's absolutely no correlation between the noise from the basketball court in this variance application.
Yes, but the house, do, do you agree that there is another house on the property?
Yeah, we know that, yeah.
Oh, you don't?
We do.
Well, I don't agree it's a, it's a house. There's a main house, and then there's an accessory structure.
And which are you talking about, for this application?
The accessory structure.
Yes, well, I'm talking about the main house.
Well, that's not part of this application.
Main house is not part of the application.
But my point is, if this application is passed, there will be two, in my opinion, main structures on this one piece of property.
The piece he's talked about is not a main structure. A property can only have one main structure. He's talking about an accessory structure.
Okay.
Properties can sometimes have an accessory structure.
Yes, I understand.
This one already has an accessory structure.
Yes.
He's talking about rebuilding that accessory structure with a new one.
Yes.
In approximately the same location, approximately the same size.
I understand that. But my question is, well, the original building has 1,032 square feet of living space, the building that they want to tear down. The building that they want to put back up, build up, is going to have 2,200 square, 32 square feet of living space.
1,900, over 1,900, and it's going to be a porch.
And a porch, including the porch. It's 2,238 square feet. That is double the residential size of the original building.
That's because they're not going to use the garage, they're not going to use the garage as garage space, they're going to use it for living space.
I understand that.
It'll be living space first floor and second floor.
You're doubling the occupancy.
No, there's only going to be one bedroom, and there's two bedrooms in the existing structure.
There's only going to be one bedroom in the new structure?
That's correct.
In 2,200 square?
Yeah, we're going to provide the plans.
We've asked for floor plans, when we get the floor plans, we'll have an idea of what it is.
Well, then maybe it's going to be-
It does appear on its face that they're doubling, approximately doubling the size of the living area.
Well, let me-
But we've asked, the board has asked that they provide floor plans, so we can see what it's going to be.
Yes. 2,230-foot square foot bedroom, wow.
Well, that's not going to be the bedroom, it's going to be living quarters.
Well, you just said the bedroom.
One bedroom, you didn't say the bedroom was 2,000 square feet.
I didn't say the bedroom was 2,200 square feet.
Yes.
I said there's going to be one bedroom.
Well, you know what my concern is? Is that this will be a dormitory for a basketball camp.
We have no way of knowing that, we can't assume that.
Oh, okay, so then I just want to go on record here, that I have this concern. So next summer, when all this noise starts to happen, hopefully the village-
Call the police.
I will, I will call the police.
That's where it belongs, it doesn't belong with us.
Well, I hoped that you would take into consideration, somehow, my, my concern.
Well, we appreciate your concerns, we certainly do.
I don't, I would like to know from the owners, really. I didn't want to come here.
Can you contact the owners?
No, because they have an unlisted number, and I have not been able to call them. I wanted to call them in the fall.
Maybe if you called the attorney in his office hours, he might be able to give you that information. Or he may be able to communicate your concerns to his client.
I wish that he would, and I'd appreciate that very much if he did it.
Well, why don't we ask him to do that?
Yeah, okay.
I will relay the information to our clients.
And then I need reassurances, I would like, if I, if possible, from your client.
I can assure you, it's not going to be a basketball camp.
I'd like you to relay my concerns to your client.
Yes, he said he would do that.
And have them get back to me if possible, either through you or personally. I really would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask our attorney, Rick, is there any limit on the number of accessory structures they can have on this lot, other than it's limited by setbacks and lot coverage? There's no limit to the number of accessory structures, correct? Tina, they could put five, 10, 20, 100 buildings on this property.
Well, that's an exaggeration.
It's an exaggeration, but there is no limit in this village to the number of accessory structures.
And it has nothing to do with the size of the lot?
It does.
It does?
I'm sure they could fit, looking at this lot, just eyeing it, they could fit many more structures on it.
Okay, well, look, I've come here as a neighbor, really. I didn't really want it to be a formal situation. I wanted to talk to the people.
I think that's the answer, if you can talk to or communicate through their attorney with his clients.
Yes.
And make your concerns known to them. Now, maybe they weren't the ones who were making the noise last year.
Yes, well, that is-
They may have had some guests, some young people, stuff like that, playing basketball and playing loud music, like you said.
I have, I've thought of that, and that's why I really did-
Did it happen like every night, or was it a one-time occurrence, or?
To my understanding, it went on three to four weeks during the month of August, and it was, I've talked to a number of neighbors, and-
See, if they're playing ball during the day, that's one thing, but if they're playing late into the night with a lot of noise, that's another thing.
Yes. Well, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
And I would like just some reassurance of what to expect, and I would rather have it as a neighborly thing than as a formal thing, but I have no other-
The answer is to try to deal with the owners of the property.
Okay, so you-
I mean, the three of us can sit here, we can't guarantee you that somebody won't come there next summer and play basketball.
Well, I understand.
Or play radio.
I understand people have guests, I know, I understand there are codes, and there are this and that, but I don't know what happened last summer, so I need to find out something from someone, if that, and you will find out for me, and I'd appreciate that very much.
Okay. Does there anyone else want to be heard?
My name's John Kubaloski, and I'm Tina's husband. And, you know, there was a lot of noise going on, and that's our concern, basically, in this house over here. Now they want to put another house over here with 2,300 square feet, a guest house. It sounds like a McMansion to me. Now, I don't know, one bedroom, is that going to be 2,300 square feet, one bedroom? Is that, is that the plan there?
It's going to be a 2,200-square-foot structure, counting the porch.
Okay.
With one bedroom in it.
Okay, our fear is that we're going to have something going on over here in the main house, and over here, too.
Well, there could be people occupying both of them, yeah.
Yeah.
They're using it for family members and for guests, not for rental.
Right, okay. Is that stated, that'll be in the application, okay.
Yeah, well, their attorney said it would not be used for rental purposes, so that'll be one of the conditions.
Right.
That the accessory structure will be used for guests and family members.
Okay.
And maybe help, but not, not for rental purposes.
Right, and, and so you can have as many structures on the property as you want, with people occupying them, is that what you're saying?
No.
You can have three pieces?
No, you could have a shed, or a garage, or a poolhouse.
Right, well, now he wants to go from 12, what was it, I thought was garage, now he wants to make that all living space?
Yes.
And that's, well, that's, that's why I'm here about that application, he's going to increase his living space.
Yes.
And that's why we're presenting this, to say, you know, that seems like a lot to do, being what has happened in the, in the past. And we're not the only people that complained, it was another-
But that's a noise issue, that's not an issue for this application.
Okay, well, the issue is, too, whether you're going to grant it and give them more space.
They're going to get more living space-
Right.
-out of that one, out of the building that's already there.
Well, I think-
They're not going to use the garage part as a garage anymore.
Yeah, it's great, you know, but that's, that's why we're here.
We get the point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to, want to adjourn this for all purposes, correct?
Yes.
We need some more information, let you know.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn for all purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 On the application of case number 2863, Robin Wamboldt, 76 Great Plains Road.
Good evening. I'm Linda Riley, 235 Hampton Road, Southampton. I've just handed up my affidavit of posting and mailing. I'm here to represent Robin Wamboldt in connection with her property at 76 Great Plains Road. Ms. Wamboldt owns two separate lots, each of which is improved with a one-family dwelling. The lots are separated by a strip of land that's burdened with an easement that benefits yet another property owner to the south, in addition to the two lots that Ms. Wamboldt owns. The larger parcel owned by the applicant at 60 Great Plains Road has a man-made pond with a deteriorating bulkhead. And it's that man-made pond that has created the wetlands area that is the reason for this application. Ms. Wamboldt received a variance in 1998 under her married name, same person, for permission, basically, to allow a proposed addition. I do have copies of that decision for everyone that I'm passing around, to allow an addition to the house that is on the property now. And...but that work was never undertaken. The variance has a couple of conditions on it about removal of pieces of it and everything else. None of it was done, and now, at this point in time, she does have plans that have been drawn up by John David Rose, architect, for the renovation of the dwelling. The plans are completely consistent with the variance that was already granted in 1998. And in the course of preparing and submitting the building application for the work, she learned for the first time that the necessary upgrade of the septic system requires a wetlands permission. All of the renovation of the house is more than 150 feet...
Just one, right?
Is more than 150 feet from the wetlands edge, but the septic system, of course, has a greater setback. It is required to be at 200 feet, and the only location for it is somewhat closer to the wetlands than the existing single leaching pool that's there now. The new septic system will meet all health department regulations, of course, and that is the only request contained in this application. It is simply a wetlands permit to allow the upgraded septic system to replace the old single leaching pool that's there now. It's going to be in essentially the same place as the existing leaching pool, but because the new system will include a five-ring system, it extends over a wider underground area than the existing leaching pool. And so it's a little bit closer in the end to the edge of the wetlands than the leaching pool is that's there now. There's no wildlife associated with the pond. Again, it's a man-made pond, and it's a relatively small man-made pond at that. It's 50 feet in diameter, more or less. And it does not connect up with any larger natural wetlands areas. It's our position that the location of the proposed septic system cannot be said to pose a threat to public health, safety, welfare, flood, hurricane, or storm damages. In fact, the installation of an upgraded code-compliant system is generally considered to be a benefit to the environment because the proposed septic tank will capture solids and thereby, you know, detain a large source of nutrient input so that it won't percolate through soils as it will and does with the existing leaching pool. Finally, the proposed septic is cited at the maximum feasible setback from the wetlands area, given the location of the existing structure, the house, given the location of the existing house. The applicant has also offered to mitigate any possible negative impacts during the construction process itself by installing silt fencing to the south and west of the disturbance area to prevent soils from eroding into the wetlands area, and they will rinse the wheels of trucks and machinery before leaving the site. And as a result, we submit that the proposed project will have no adverse effects on the wetlands, which are on the adjacent parcel.
The variance that you mentioned, they didn't act upon that one, right?
No, no.
Just a few years ago, have they acted on that one yet?
They haven't built the pool yet either.
Okay.
On the other property? No, that hasn't been constructed yet either.
Okay.
And you're right, you did just review a variance application, not a variance, it was a variance, yeah.
It was a variance.
It was a variance.
Had to do with the wetlands.
Wetlands.
For zoning? No.
No, for wetlands.
I don't think a driveway would be a structure, though.
Yeah.
For wetlands.
Is there anything else?
No. I have no...I'm here to answer questions.
Jim?
Before...oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Rick?
Before Chick starts, let me just confirm one thing, because I hadn't seen this decision before, before you handed it up tonight.
I should have handed it in with my application.
But these variances have not expired, they're still in effect. So what you're doing, other than the septic system, is you're acting under this variance.
That's right.
You're not looking to change any...
Nothing, no. She has plans drawn up that are completely consistent, I am told.
So it's purely a wetlands thing for the septic system?
Septic system only.
Okay. That was my only question.
First time I've seen it was earlier this week, as you know, and really didn't get to look at it in too much detail until tonight. So just a couple of questions. Could you provide the setback to the existing sanitary system on the survey?
Well, there is no sanitary system. There's an ancient leaching ring, and it's on the survey, it's shown there. Can I point it out to you?
So if it's scaled off, it would be right here?
That's it. Oh, you mean, you want the...
Yeah, just a...essentially, a setback to it. It looks as though it's located.
Right, it's located. You could scale it off, but you...
Yeah, I mean, I think it helps. Usually, when we do replace sanitary systems, we try and get them farther from the wetlands than the existing.
But I think you can see from the survey that that's not possible to do with the requirements now for the five rings.
Yeah, I actually don't know the setback requirement for the septic tank from the foundation. I think it might be 10 feet. And from the rings to the septic tank. But if it's at all possible to condense that, and maybe it's just a quick explanation that it can't be, in which case, your justification would be that you're improving the effectiveness of the sanitary system by installing a conforming system with a septic tank.
Well, that's very much...
And you explained that quite well. I think it's just I'm asking if it's possible to condense that a little bit, to get it at least the same or possibly greater than the existing sanitary system. And again, if the answer is no, I understand it. I don't think we want to start taking out trees that I see a little bit to the east. But I think it would help to just, you know, understand the setback to the existing. The proposed is 136 feet, and if it's possible to equal or improve that situation. And then, just a, you know, pretty minor point on that, within 125 feet, if there's disturbance with respect to landscaping, you know, we'd look for some type of restoration. So if it's at all possible, can the silt fence be put at the 125 feet so that we know that there won't be any disturbance within that setback area?
That's fine. It is all grassed area.
Yeah, I've seen the property.
It is lawn, it's not...in that area around there, it's all lawn, and it's not, there aren't any slopes or anything like that. But I believe that the silt fencing can be...
It looks to me as though it can be.
Can be done at 125 feet, and we're happy to do that.
Just takes the question away.
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
And then, we didn't receive a request to verify the wetlands, but I did read the wetland delineation report, it's fairly detailed. And I think just if we get a break in the weather before the next meeting, I'll try and get out to the site. Is there any issue with access to the property to take a look at the wetland area?
No, there is no gate. I'll let my client know you're going to do that.
Yeah, I usually identify myself at someone's home and...
No, and that strip where the driveway is provides access to other parcels also, so...
Right.
Yeah. You won't find much in the way of wetlands there, but you're certainly welcome.
No, I understand. I did read the report, as I said, and it's...
Right.
It is man-made. There is a system farther to the south, but it's not directly connected.
But it's not connected.
Right, understood. And then, I assume there's no fill, based on the sanitary profile? You're not proposing any fill with that, right?
No, no.
And what is the status with the health department at this time?
We have a permit.
You do?
She has a health department permit. She was already...she has a health department permit.
Okay.
She's got that. Would you like me to submit that?
It wouldn't hurt for my file. It would be a good thing for me to have it in the file.
Yeah, she was all ready to...she was all ready for her building permit. Everything's done.
You realize that this is needed.
I think the building department brought it to her attention.
Okay. And then, I also saw that the well pit, there's a well pit, and the well is to be abandoned. Will there be any activity there, or is it just...
No, I don't...
Any mechanicals from that?
No, I don't believe it requires any kind of digging, or...you mean, like excavation?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't believe so, no. But I'll...as long as I'm coming back, I'll get some...
Okay. And then, just for your own knowledge and something you may want to follow up on, when a well is abandoned...
Mm-hmm.
There is a DEC well abandonment protocol that calls for grouting the well, just so that it can't be a conduit for any type of contaminants that might be introduced. It's not part of our jurisdiction, but you may want to...
For grouting the well?
Yes. And you could check with the engineer, but...
I will.
It may be advisable to just make sure it's properly...
It may be part of the plan, I really don't know. I can check with the engineer, yes.
Okay. And again, it's not really part of our jurisdiction, but it's good practice.
Mm-hmm.
And that was all I had.
Is there anyone out in the audience who'd like to rehearse this application? No, so what we're going to do is hold this one open, right?
Actually, just really quick. Linda, could you have the engineer just identify the type of setback for each of the radii that are shown on the plan? It just says 125-foot wetland setback, and there's three of them. So if you could distinguish between landscaping, 150 for structure, and 200 for sanitary, I just think it would be a little clearer on the plan.
125, 150, and 200, I mean, oh, just put the...
They're all shown.
Just put the numbers on them.
No, just indicate...
Label them more specifically.
Okay.
They're all called wetland setbacks, but...
Okay.
It says wetland setback. This one is landscaping, this one is structure, and then it's sanitary.
Oh, okay, so you want me to say landscaping, structure, sanitary?
Otherwise, it's confusing. They seem like they're the same, and you don't really understand the purpose.
We knew we were talking to you, though.
We know what it is, but who knows?
Okay.
Getting old like Rick, I may not be around for it.
Motion to adjourn for all purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting of the Southampton Village Zoning Board of Appeals is adjourned.